Good evening, everyone. The September 3, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. Please join Ms. Radvian in the invocation and the pledge.
As we gather here this evening, let's take a moment to appreciate the opportunity that we have to come together in the spirit of collaboration and progress. May our discussions be marked by clarity and respect, and may our decisions reflect a commitment to the common good. Let us approach our tasks with an open mind and a willingness to listen so that we can work together effectively towards our shared goals of serving Anarundel County. Thank you for being here and for your dedication to this collective effort. And now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my privilege at this time to turn the meeting over to Councilwoman Fiedler to present some citations. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I present the citations, I want to share that I often say that local government can have the most impact on your daily life. In 2019, there was a previous council that sat here, but ACE Aquatics reached out to me and asked me to consider a bill to lower the lifeguard minimum age in Anarundel County from 16 to 15. They were having a difficult time covering lifeguard shifts in the summer, and these are critical positions. Some of my colleagues here were on the council at that time, and we passed the bill for all intents and purposes unanimously. I had unfortunately a family emergency and had to step out for that meeting, but being the sponsor, I can assure you that was a unanimous vote. Emergency situations at pools don't always have a happy ending. You have to have the right people in the right place at the right time. And when you have that combination, lifesaving moments can take place. So why am I sharing this here in 2024? Well, just a few weeks ago, a team of lifeguards in Severna Park, ages 15 to 17, saved an 11-year-old girl. So I think it's important to acknowledge the work and the training that they did that allowed them to respond quickly and swiftly and save someone's life in our community. So I'd like to call the lifeguards forward if you're here. I think we're missing two this evening, but three of them are here this evening: Josie Crockett, Kobe Bragg, and Joni Renaud. Johnny Renaud.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So if you could each join me here, face the audience. So I'm just very proud of all five of these young people who are all students of Severna Park High School. So I'm going to read the citation. They each have the same text in their citations with their names at the top. "Josie Crockett, in recognition, the Anarundel County would like to recognize your swift response in a life-threatening emergency, using your essential training skills through teamwork with your fellow lifeguards that saved a young girl's life at Oakley Forest Pool. The council appreciates your commitment to life and safety of county residents and thanks you for your quick thinking and bravery in a stressful situation, exemplifying true heroics." And because you don't see teens saving lives too often, and we have three of them here, I'm going to read it for each of them. Kobe Bragg, "In recognition, the Anarundel County Council would like to recognize your swift response in a life-threatening emergency, using your essential training skills through teamwork with your fellow lifeguards that saved a young girl's life at Oakley Forest Pool. The council appreciates your commitment to life and safety of county residents and thanks you for your quick thinking and bravery in a stressful situation, exemplifying true heroics." And Joni Renaud, "The Anarundel County Council would like to recognize your swift response in a life-threatening emergency, using your essential training skills through teamwork with your fellow lifeguards that saved a young girl's life at Oakley Forest Pool. The council appreciates your commitment to life and safety of county residents and thanks you for your quick thinking and bravery in a stressful situation, exemplifying true heroics." And Joni Renaud, "The Anarundel County Council would like to recognize your swift response in a life-threatening emergency, using your essential training skills through teamwork with your fellow lifeguards that saved a young girl's life at Oakley Forest Pool. The council appreciates your commitment to life and safety of county residents and thanks you for your quick thinking and bravery in a stressful situation, exemplifying true heroics." And I just have to share, Joni reached out to me personally after getting an email asking him to attend this evening. This was his first real job ever, and he was only two weeks on the job at the time of the incident. So the fact that you all clicked so quickly and were able to take control of a very scary situation, we just commend you, and thank you. I think that Joni will come up for some pictures.
It was fun to read about that in the news. I also had two summer lifeguards this summer. One will probably continue, one probably won't do it again. It's a very responsible job, and we thank you for your service to the county. At this time, I'd like to welcome the current President of the Maryland Association of Counties and Baltimore County Executive, Mr. Johnny Oshewski, and Executive Director Michael Sanderson of Mako, the Maryland Association of Counties, for their annual presentation before this body tonight. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight. As Councilwoman Pickard indicated, Johnny Oshewski, Baltimore County Executive, proud President of the Maryland Association of Counties, joined with my colleague, the Executive Director of Mako, Michael Sanderson. I first just want to thank Anarundel County for your active participation and partnership in the work that we do at Mako. It's an honor to be with you tonight. I had the opportunity to join with County Executive Pittman before this meeting as well. We're here to just share some updates with the work that Maryland Association of Counties has been doing, but we also want to hear from you all as well. This is, I believe we said, stop 12, Michael, of our 24 visits across Maryland's counties in the city of Baltimore. And we've really enjoyed the conversations, learning about the great work our local governments are doing. You know, what's been really rewarding for me in this role is to see the ways in which, whether it's Republican or Democrat, large or small, urban, rural, a lot of the issues we're all facing are very much the same in local government, the challenges associated with the implementation of Blueprint, school construction, transparency in education funding, transportation dollars, and we know we just had some announcement today from MDOT about over $1 billion of cuts to projects across the state, our community colleges, housing, solar siting, et cetera. So our challenges are shared. We're here to be partners. Michael will give some updates, and then, of course, if you have questions, we'd love to hear from you and how we can be of better service to Anarundel County in the year ahead. So thanks again for having us, and I'll turn things over to Michael. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for the time this evening. Again, I'm Michael Sanderson, Director at the Maryland Association of Counties. As is our want, we brought you a big packet of stuff. And then, as is my custom, I will proudly announce, we're not going to go through that in a whole lot of detail, it's just kind of a leave behind, but a skim through of a number of issues that Mako has been focusing on and writing about and so forth in our effort to help inform, educate, assist all of our county members, help you deliver excellent service to residents across the state. So I'll touch on just a handful of policy issues that are still live and we're still looking forward to, as well as backward. The front page of this one pager is kind of looking back at the last legislative session, but as we get into July, August, September, it's kind of start thinking, looking forward. So I'll do more of that than looking backward necessarily. But let me start with a moment or two on the state's overall fiscal circumstance. To some degree, the canary in the coal mine and a little bit of fiscal distress is what we're seeing in transportation right now, with the state saying revenues aren't keeping up with the promises and the expectations of our own infrastructure, and the state has a conundrum on their hands. They've basically told local jurisdictions, you've got a wish list of projects, they're all meritorious, they all make sense, but if you don't have a shovel in the ground, you probably aren't going to find money in the planning years coming up ahead. So it's a tough situation for transportation, and the same lies not too far down the road for the state's overall budget circumstance. The state's general fund budget is around $25 billion. That means for them, the sort of building block unit of the government is maybe $100 million or thereabouts. If the state has a problem to the tune of $200, $400, $500 million, that sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but in a practical matter, that's the kind of stuff that the legislature can usually resolve without having to, you know, off with anybody's head. Once you get to a billion-dollar problem or more is when the consequences become more serious. You talk about what programs do you do without, or what ambitions have to be set aside and so forth. And as the state looks at their own fiscal forecast, we've got a weird circumstance with revenue right now. We still are kind of on unsettled ground, maybe thin ice a little bit with the economy that doesn't seem to be obeying the usual rules. Ordinarily, an economy like Maryland's with unemployment this low, that would be an indicator that business must be booming, the labor market must be outstanding, everybody must be succeeding and, you know, turning lots of profits and so forth, but that doesn't seem to be showing up in the true indicators. So we're getting weird messages from the economy. For the state, that turns into revenue right away. Their biggest movers are income tax and sales tax. So that's what are you earning and what are you buying right now? So they don't know where they are, but they see a couple of years down the road that their budget is upside down deeply. A big part of that is, as we know, the state is in the midst of a phase-in of the Blueprint, a big ambitious program to do more and get more out of our public schools across the state. That's a joint state and county commitment, but there's a twist that the state has money in a trust fund. Voters, through a constitutional amendment, put casino money into an education trust fund for these purposes, and it built up a balance. So the state is still spending for its share of the Blueprint basically out of piggy bank, and they're not feeling it in their general fund yet. We're in FY '25. This coming spring, they're going to sort out the FY '26 budget. They can get through '26 and '27 with what's in the sock, and '28 is when their numbers go way upside down because the actual cost of the Blueprint starts coming out of cash rather than reserves. Most counties are already feeling that pinch to some degree. The Blueprint also asks for commitments from counties, in most cases above and beyond what they've been doing. We've been seeing that debate turn into both money and program, back and forth with school systems and with county leaders on what can we afford, or what things do you have to do without in the service of promoting elements that are within the Blueprint. So all those things are growing pains for a big ambitious program, but it also has a big price tag, and it's a major component of the fiscal stress the state is facing. So they're in a tough box. I don't sit before you with a crystal ball saying, we know exactly how this is going to play out, because we don't. The state has a variety of leaders saying a variety of things that are not necessarily all on the same page. So depending on what part of the kaleidoscope you see, you might hear, we have to live up to these promises, or you might hear, everything's on the table, or you might hear, the bar is very, very high to raise revenues to do these things. Somewhere in the mix of comments like that is the thinking in Annapolis, folks down the road in Annapolis, that is, for what state policy might look like, but fiscal policy tends to have a sort of cascading effect on counties' priorities and budgets as well. So I start there with a note of uncertainty, but that's kind of where we all are, and that's usually one of the biggest tone setters for the relationship. I'll mention quickly just a couple other policy areas that have been alive in the General Assembly and with state policymakers, and I think will continue to be. The county executive mentioned affordable housing. I know this is a topic very live and of the moment. In this jurisdiction, you're not alone. These pressures are nationwide and statewide and feel local, community by community. Lots of contributing factors to what's going on with the housing crisis, but we know we're in one, and solutions happening at the local level, in our judgment, generally is preferred to a one-size-fits-all approach coming from on high. The idea that the Kent County affordability problem might look identical to the Anarundel County and the Frederick County problem seems naive. General Assembly made strides in a number of specific areas on housing policy this last year, and local governments were collaborators rather than impediments in that process, and I'm pleased with that. But the state changed some laws to create some higher density opportunities around transit centers, to do some more green taping for projects that were low-income, specific housing, getting grants through specific projects, some sort of targeted things along those lines to let us be partners and give some local guidance on what we can do to move some more things along. So the state taking some action can be helpful. Local jurisdictions taking this problem seriously is helpful as well, so I know you're all in the midst of that, and you've got folks here who are stakeholders, probably enough said on that front, but it's something we're very interested in as well. The county executive also made a quick mention, this is something that's been coming up in our meetings, and I know it is in this county, the pressure for clean energy to live up to Maryland's pledges for a clean portfolio for electric supply for users in the state is just a continuing and increasing push for the use of kind of low-lying agricultural areas. We're seeing lots and lots of pressure for farms to go from soybeans to silicon. For the most part, the policy regarding big-scale solar development is essentially, the state has already trumped locals' ability to manage through the usual planning and zoning process. They created these laws for big power plants where there was a big NIMBY problem, and now you end up with a comparable issue, but it's just for a farm that's turning into a large solar-scale development. This is a contentious issue, a difficult one, because there's a lot of folks who are both for clean energy and for the development of solar, but concerned that this is coming right at the heart of the agricultural community. In parts of our state, you have to look pretty hard just to find an active farm any longer because prime farmland is being gobbled up by clean energy. It's worthy ideas that are inconspicuous to one another. The idea of keeping some community input and guidance, you want to have a buffer, you want to have some visibility so it's not shiny on the roadway, or other things like that, I think those are sensible inputs for the local governments that we'd like to be able to retain without impeding the goals of getting to a clean energy portfolio on a pretty fast track that Maryland is pointing toward. I'll skip a number of other issues that are sort of talked about in this program, implementing the paid leave law. We think there's going to be a plug-and-play option for counties who are looking to manage that locally. We fought off some funding cuts for our community colleges, but that issue is not over. Still working on issues to make sure that people who are incarcerated in local jails get the treatment they need, and in many cases, that's beyond the capacity of the local jail. If what they need is psychiatric treatment or drug abuse treatment or so forth, that's not really our ballgame. The state ought to have a bed or ought to have a place for folks who have those kinds of needs. A lot of issues like that where the state and local government responsibility sort of have a gray area in the middle, that's where we spend an awful lot of our time. But the goal of an organization like Mako is to make sure that our counties can deliver excellent service back home. That's what we try and do on your behalf, both advocating in Annapolis on policies like I've just talked about, but also at our events and conferences and so forth coming up. So that said, enough from me, but delighted to hear if there are other issues that I skipped over or just missed entirely that you'd like to talk about.
Do my colleagues have any questions or comments for our presenters from Mako? So it was a pleasure to be at the Mako Summer Conference. You always do a tremendous job of bringing the most pertinent and timely issues to the table. Ms. Hummer and I both serve as the legislative representatives for Anarundel County. It's always fun and interesting to be with our colleagues from around the 24 jurisdictions, and, Michael, you always make it fantastic. I would like to, I did have an interesting conversation at Mako this summer with folks from the Maryland Department of Transportation that deal specifically with federal dollars that can come into the state. And since there is this $1 billion pinch in transportation, do you think there's an opportunity for Mako to work with, maybe our partners at NACO, to figure out how that localities can still access those federal dollars without hurting our contribution? We have county roads to take care of, and I know we can possibly use county dollars to meet a federal match, but that takes away from our ability to fix our own roads. Is there any opportunity for something like that in the coming year?
I don't think I would ever answer no to that question, but I will say, I want to give some kudos where they're due. Our partners at the National Association of Counties have been outstanding over the last few years as pockets of federal money through the pandemic showed up in a variety of columns and so forth. They were absolutely relentless to try and make sure that your fiscal staff and your program staff had an opportunity to get proper access, to be able to document what they were doing. In some cases, we need a longer time period to accomplish various things and so forth. They've been absolutely relentless on that front. I'm happy to circle back with them about the specifics in transportation, but it won't be the first time they've heard from their members back at the state level and the county level this kind of concern. So I'll circle back, and if there's more there than is meeting the eye in my mind right at the moment, I'll get something back to you all.
Great, thanks.
Timely.
If I may just add, Madam Chair, I think your question's timely. To be determined how the cuts impact the conversation, but we were lucky to be at the table last year where appropriations, in particular, in the house side in particular, was interested not just in sort of new projects, but taking a look back at some of the highway user cuts that all counties have felt across the state. We're at, you know, 10 cents on the dollar in terms of what we used to get before the Great Recession and the cuts there. And so, you know, because of our partnership, because of your involvement in the conversation, I think state legislators now understand it's not just about these like big projects that are now being cut in this most recent round, but also that we've been limping along, trying to maintain these roads with just the pittance of what we had had in years prior. So thank you for your, you know, partnership in that work, too.
Yeah, for the folks listening at home and in the audience today, Anarundel County has prioritized our own county resources towards state road improvements, and we have been able to put many of our state road projects at the top of the priority list of the state. But when we do that, yes, we're addressing issues on Route 3, but it is taking county tax dollars away from Fern Road or smaller roads that you also like to hear about getting repaired. And I know all of us here hear from our constituents about road improvements. I hear about them on the daily. So it is something that is concerning. I know, I'm hopeful that our big projects on Route 3 and Route 2 are moving forward, even amongst these cuts. They're huge thoroughfares for not just the county but the state. So I think we're in okay shape, but we'll probably be having to make some hard decisions here at the local level. Ms. Fiedler, did you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I cannot remember if it was last Mako conference or two ago, but there was a session that discussed retail theft and the challenges that every jurisdiction is facing with regards to prosecuting, because if you look at individual jurisdictions alone, it's a petty crime, but if you look at the whole, you know, statewide, one person is doing a lot of activity. What is the update on that arena? Because I know I get emails from constituents who see it happening in front of their eyes, carts getting full of retail items and just walking out the front door.
So I know we had a number of partners who were part of pulling together this session, and it was a like standing-room-only and sort of bated-breath kind of room. This is one of those issues that really touches a lot of nerves. The Attorney General's Office made a real priority and worked with the retail community on this area, and they were both part of the presentation at the Mako conference sometimes. And it's not exactly county government, but it's a community issue that obviously you feel and your colleagues do as well. Let me reach back out to them and find out if there's something new, and if there's an on-ramp that is available to the county that we haven't been using, I'll circle back with you all and get something to the full council.
Great, thank you.
My colleagues? Well, thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Great to be with you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks for your service.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll resume our regularly scheduled programming. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
Excuse me. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Thank you. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please know individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation-to-audience portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 27 pieces. They were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Thank you. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting when I call your name. Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, you state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. We had four individuals sign up in advance: James Marilat, Ralph Youngs, David Corrigan, and Eric Youngs. Are y'all in the audience today? Come forward and take a seat. We have six seats available, so if there is a fifth, and I see we have a sixth, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, Mr. Marilat, is that, is he not here? Ralph Youngs?
Hello, my name is Ralph Youngs. I live in the Broadneck. I'm here tonight to repeat a plea that I made in a January email to the council regarding animal care and control. I thank you now for that, the positive feedback that I did get from the council members. We now have a new shelter director, thank you, and yet there is a major transition still underway. We've had a recent major retirement, and we are short-staffed. Today, the shelter is full. There are over 300 animals, and this shelter is responsibility today. The building is aging, and the shelter is shorthanded, maybe not on the manning document, but certainly shorthanded for the amount of animals that we have and the amount of work that needs to be done. The new director has a monumental task ahead and needs our full support, as well as a solid foundation to help navigate the future needs of the animals, the citizens, and the shelter staff. In a recent weekly letter, the county executive, as well as in his attendance at one of the Animal Welfare Council's meetings, he agreed that a work group might be of some use, but suggested there might be a work group in existence already. I don't think there is. A fresh new committee is needed with the widest possible representation from the animal welfare community and the shelter staff. The Animal Matters Commission and the Animal Welfare Council have qualified membership but are not chartered as planning committees to take on the special task required. Again, my July email is repeated in my online testimony, and I hope that the council can join the animal welfare community and urge the county executive to seriously consider this undertaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. David Corrigan?
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I will make it brief. I wanted to speak a little bit about the noise ordinance as we have it today in Anarundel County. And I want to thank Mr. Volk. I have a copy of the bill that you sponsored, and I'll say that from my look at what's around I have a copy of the bill that you sponsored, and I'll say that from my look at what's around the surrounding counties, it's probably one of the better bills out there. And all of us hope that our neighbors are going to be good neighbors, and ordinances like this are only needed in situations where you have problems. And I wanted to talk about an issue I have where it kind of escapes its ordinance, and I would like for you all to consider adopting a change to the ordinance, a slight change. And that is, the ordinance makes a distinction between amplified and a non-amplified musical instrument. But there's one musical instrument that can be louder than amplified electrical instruments, and that's a drum. Drums, for y'all who probably have been in bars before, you know that they don't require amplification sitting in a band. They things bounce across the room all on their own. And the loudness from a drum set measured... Sound is typically measured in decibels, and the sound from a drum set is 90 to 130 decibels. Now, that's 64 times as loud as a piano or an acoustic guitar. It's an entirely different type of animal where it comes as noise. And so what I'm asking for is for you all to make a slight adjustment into that code to put drums in the same category as amplified musical instruments. And I've got presentation here that I will leave, I made a copy for each of you, that gives some more details on the sound volume of drums versus other things. But it runs in the range of the size, the sound of jackhammers to police sirens, and it carries across the yards very quickly. And I have the situation in my next-door neighbor where it comes into my house. And so I'm hoping you all take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir. You can leave your presentations, Mr. Corrigan, with Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down this evening. Eric Young? No. Go ahead.
Linda Hanifin Bonner with Anarundel Connecting Together. Just a few moments and a few comments. I want to act would like to thank council members Pickard, Hummer, and Rodian for their hard work this past summer and over the many months in preparing the bill that will be introduced this evening with respect to attainable housing. We know it's not the first step, not the end of our hard work. It's just a beginning, and we are encouraged that it's finally come back. And we're particularly appreciative of Council Chair Pickard for her commitment to bringing it back and making it become a reality. We are hopeful that after the October 7 hearing, that all council members will support this legislation as a first step in making a difference in the county. There's one other point that I would like to bring up that will be discussed later today, and that's the repeal of the amendment on the shot town from Region 4 Plan. There was also another amendment that was overlooked, and we would like to hope that it would also be repealed, and that is the amendment with respect to the Broadneck Road and Middletown Road properties. And that was overlooked in the process to be vetoed and to have it repealed. These people deserve the same social equity that was given to other property owners in that Region 4 area. So thank you again for your work.
Thank you. Sir?
Ladies, my esteemed... I was going to talk to you guys before now, but I've been kind of incapacitated. But at the last meeting I was at, there was an emergency appropriation bill that was brought before this council, and when Mr. Volkie asked the administration for answers, the best answer he could get was none right now, okay? Spending in this county is out of control, and I didn't pick up off Mako. I just kind of said, boy, what timing coming down to this meeting. I think, Ms. Rodvine, you kind of acknowledged that in that meeting. You said, yeah, this is out of control. We've got to do something. And what I want to do is just encourage you, as you go into this budget season, after getting my tax bill, to reach back on, I think, what Mr. Smith said that evening when he explained one of his votes. We've got to go back to the basics, okay? When things are going strong, we've got to take care of the basics. We can't continue to spend and give and spend and give at the rate we're doing in this county. And I would ask that each of you, when you get your budget put together or you review the budget, I've been in meetings this week hearing about all the projects that are coming down, and ask the hard questions. Make people be accountable for what they're bringing before you. Don't let them bring whitewashed before you. And if they do, we've got to hold them accountable. And once we start holding people accountable, we'll start seeing some of that get shook out before it gets here, because I think it's unfair that they're forcing this council to legislate what the administration should be doing. So I thank you for your service, and you'll be seeing more of me as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to come forward to speak on a topic not on the written agenda? Ma'am?
Oh, me? Okay. Okay, I own a property on Hilda in Pasadena, and I received a letter of violation of the yard. And then, actually, it was posted on the door, and my son received it. He then called around to get some estimates, and then called for an extension at your offices. And he called all week, and no one ever answered the phone. So by the time I hear about it Monday, I immediately call, and she said, there's nothing they can do. They already sent the man out. It's on the list. They can't do anything about it. But if we get there, if the place gets cleaned up before he comes, then they won't enter the property. So my son cleaned it up in compliance for what she had explained to us on the phone. And then last Thursday, they came along on the property and dug up a bunch of plants. And then when I called the gal at the violation area, she said, this is the first I heard of it, that vines cannot be more than 12 inches tall. I'm driving down the road, there's vines all over the place in people's private property. So is that a rule or isn't it a rule? She didn't tell that to me before, but she told it to me today when I was complaining about why were they even on the property? So that was one thing. When the general... There were five workers that came to the property, and they worked for four hours. When I looked at what was cut on the property, I could have done that in two hours by myself. So I'm not really sure what they were doing. The other issue is, a lot of the work was done on the back chain link fence and on the side chain link fence. I don't even know if I own that property, or if my neighbors own it, or if it's jointly owned. But they didn't come and take off the vines on the other people's property at the same time.
Thank you, ma'am. You didn't actually... Can you tell us your name?
Carrie Abbott.
Carrie Abbott, okay. Thank you. Is there anything you want to leave with our secretary? Or, Mr. Volkie, this is your...
I don't have anything formal for you.
Well, can we just get a copy of whatever letter DPW sent to you? Because that'll have your address. I don't need you to say it on the record, but I just want to get a copy of that, and then we can contact DPW. But I just need to get a picture of that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Volkie. Sir, state your name and address on the record, and you have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jim Holman. I live off Meyer Station Road in Odenton, Maryland. What brings me here tonight is, in our community, we currently have a development with 2,060 homes. They would like to add an additional 377 homes on a parcel of their land that has been deemed open space. Now, in this area, you mentioned earlier, the traffic on Route 3 and the bottleneck, we're running into the same issues down in our community, which is very rural. There is a... Depending upon whom you talk to, if you talk to the state, the state will tell you county. If you talk to the county, the county will tell you state. But there is a covenants that actually runs with that land that says nothing is to be built on it and that the development itself is not to be any larger than its current 2,060 homes. Who is responsible for enforcing that aspect so we prevent, in the very rural area, the overdevelopment? That's all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion that a partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the July 15 and August 12, 2024 meetings.
Minutes for July 15, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 PM. It was opened with an invocation given by Ms. Fiedler and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. Minutes for August 12, the county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 8:30 AM. The meeting was held virtually.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 15 and August 12, 2024? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The minutes of July 15 and August 12, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6824, In Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, College Parkway Place, Annapolis, Maryland, Amendment. Bill Number 6924, In Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Villages at Marley's Station, Glen Burnie, Maryland, Second Amendment. Bill Number 7024, In Ordnance Concerning Crimes, Civil Offenses and Fines, Crimes, Miscellaneous Prohibited Act, Second Amendment. Bill Number 7124, In Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Second-Hand Dealer License, Second-Hand Sales. Bill Number 7224, In Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Public Works, Subdivision, and Development, Zoning, Housing Attainability Act of 2024.
For a minute, I thought you were going to read that whole purpose paragraph. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 3424, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 5. Resolution Number 3524, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 6. Resolution Number 3624, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 8.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 61-24.
Bill Number 6124, In Ordnance Concerning Anarundel County Transit Development Plan 2024.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, when your team is assembled, you may begin. We've already held the public hearing on this bill, so there will only be a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Brian Ulrich from the Office of Transportation, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. I know we already held the hearing on this. It was a couple months ago at this point. Happy to run over it real quick if you would like, or if not, can answer any questions. I know the hearing's been concluded, so...
Would my colleagues like a brief synopsis? They would.
Okay, sure. So the Transit Development Plan is a five-year, short-term transit plan, which is required by the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Transit Administration, as a condition of being a locally operated transit system or lots recipient of funding. The Transit Development Plan is used as a basis for preparing their annual transportation plans, which serve as their grant applications for transit funding. The TDP... Excuse me. Allergies, apologies. So the TDP is a component of the Transportation Master Plan Move Anarundel, which also includes a long-range vision for transit. And as a reminder, ridership numbers have doubled in Anarundel County since pre-pandemic numbers, from 315,941 trips in FY '24 versus 154,389 trips in FY 2020. And I'm sure Mr. Ulrich can give further information in more detail, if you would like to add anything.
I don't have anything specific, but I can answer any question.
Mr. Volkie?
Hi there. Good, thank you. Good evening. I do have a question. So somebody reached out to me last month, and they talked about, and I don't see it in the plan, that's why I'm asking. Is there a bus line that now goes into Lake Shore Plaza in Pasadena? What somebody said is, it goes, I think it connects Rundle Mills, Cromwell, Freetown Village, and then Lake Shore Plaza. Is that... I didn't see that in the plan, but that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so that was a route adjustment that was made to the 201.
Okay.
That goes from Pasadena over to Rundle Mills, and that was enacted this summer, I believe.
Okay. Is that in this plan? Because I'm looking at the Route 201, I guess it's on page 2-7, and it looks like it goes Rundle Mills, Cromwell, comes into Sun Valley, stops in Freetown. It does not show it going all the way down to Lake Shore Peninsula.
Right. The existing routes, there was just kind of a generic language that the existing routes would be modified for frequency and stops occasionally as time goes on. So there was nothing specific looked at for that particular. It was kind of looking at other routes, but the existing routes being modified was just kind of generically said, we'll continue to do that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So how do we know when you all do that? Like, how are we made aware of that? I guess my problem is, but for this person reaching out to me and telling me, I'd be voting on this plan tonight and voting effectively to keep that and say, yeah, that's a good thing. But the problem that I have is, I don't see that anywhere in the plan. So when I'm voting on this, I have information that's not in this plan, that's now being given to me that you all are confirming. I just don't know how we're supposed to know what's actually in here when we vote on it.
I understand your concern. I guess this is... The plan is more higher-level, so even, you know, it's kind of talking about connections, communities to areas. And so the 201, it generally connects Pasadena to the Rundle Mills area handover, I guess.
I mean, it says it connects Rundle, Freetown Village, runs between Rundle Mills and Odenton Hill. I don't see where it says it connects to Pasadena. So that's, again, that's where I'm looking at this plan going, where's the trigger for me if I'm reading this and trying to be in the plan to know what it actually does?
Right. I understand. And then there's additional changes that have been made that separated the gold into gold, silver, and bronze that also are not in the plan. So those are kind of just operational changes that were made to better serve the public. I understand it's not exactly in the plan. I don't... The plan was looking higher level at, generally, what we would do, and it was to focus on doing call-and-ride, expand service. If we're going to expand service, we're not going to add new lines. We're not going to add a lot of new lines. There are a couple new lines proposed, but generally it was modify the existing routes, keep the existing routes, and then add call-and-ride service to feed those existing routes. So it was a modification to the existing route. Even the routes that are in here proposed, the exact stops, timing, aren't set. It was just generally, these communities need to be connected.
Okay. Yeah, and I get the difference between sort of call-and-ride service versus you have a standing line. I guess the challenge I have is, it looks like there's a lot of graphics, there's a lot of lines. It shows in pretty good detail where the stops are. It explains the overview of everything, but then it looks like there's more that's not in the plan, and that's the struggle I'm having. So anyway, I raised that.
Yeah, I get it. I understand.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments from my colleagues? Madam Secretary, please, do we need to read the title again? No? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 61-24.
Mr. Volkie?
Day.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvine?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 6124 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 64-24.
Bill Number 6424, In Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewage Systems.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. When your team is assembled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Cindy Carrier from the Office of Law. With me at the table are Cindy Carrier from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. The county master plan for water and sewer systems, sewage systems, was originally adopted by this council in 2022. Amendments to the plan must be approved by the council. So, the purpose of this bill is to, sorry, the purpose of this bill is to amend the plan for properties which are shown in the exhibits, but they are tax map parcel, tax map 30, parcel 399, which is owned by Albert Farms LLC, and tax map 22, parcel 6, which is owned by Points Field West Citizens Association, Incorporated, and tax map 31, parcel 371, which is owned by the county. It's changing those from the no public service category in the rural service area into planned service category in the broadneck service area, which is consistent with Plan 2040, the county's general development plan, due to their designation within the plan as neighborhood preservation development policy areas and low-density residential planned land use. I can turn it over to Cindy if she wants to add anything, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, but I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill impacts the Severna Park area in District 5. I know I reached out with a question regarding the specifics related to zoning versus the master plan for sewer and water, because I did hear from a resident in the community about parcel 6 and parcel 371. I think there was just confusion in the community that just because you see those parcels on the master sewer and water plan, does not mean that they would be developed. The underlying zoning of open space is what protects those two parcels from development. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion on Bill 64-24? Seeing none, at this time, we'll now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have no one signed up ahead of time. We will call on individuals, or folks are welcome to come up and speak. They have two minutes. If you have any comments on Bill number 64-24. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 64-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 64-24.
Bill number 6424, In Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
No further comments, questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 64-24.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 6424 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 65-24.
Bill number 6524, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, School Utilization Chart.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. When you assemble your team, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, Bill Heiser and Kyle Roof from Anna Rundle County Public Schools, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. The purpose of this legislation is to propose a new school utilization chart in accordance with Section 17-5-502 of the county code. This new chart has been prepared to reflect and incorporate the results of the Phase One redistricting plan, which was approved by the Board of Education in 2023, as well as the most recent student enrollment projections, which were reflected in the 2024 Educational Facilities Master Plan. Phase One redistricting established new boundaries for 48 schools as part of an initiative to bring all schools in the county's six northernmost clusters under 100% capacity. Redistricting plan impacted the Chesapeake, Glen Burnie, Meade, North County, Northeast, and Severn Run clusters, and established attendant zones for Severn Run High School and Tudor's Elementary School, both of which opened in this current school year. As a result, the open-closed status of 21 schools have changed in this proposed school chart, with 18 schools changing from closed to open, and three schools changing from open to closed. The three that will change to closed are the Four Seasons Elementary School, Odenton Elementary School, and Crofton Woods Elementary School. There is one technical amendment that we'll ask you to adopt at the appropriate time, and until then, we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues for the folks at the table? Ms. Hummer.
So, this is a question a little off, and y'all may not be answering. I'm putting you on the spot. Based on our projections for this school year, how close are we looking right now for the enrollment that we started this school year? I know it's early. I know we don't have the final. I'm just curious, for the first week, what does it look like?
It looks like we're fairly close to our projections. Again, we won't know the final numbers until after September 30th, but all indications are that we're moving up and close to our target.
Okay, great. And it's nice to see the chart now to reflect our three brand-new schools that just opened. It's great. It was wonderful to be there for the opening last week and see that, and it really has made a huge difference in the capacity numbers for the northern part, half of the county. So, great job.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming out this evening, and happy first full week of school, I believe. If you all are as tired as my kids, then it's been a successful start. I just want to thank you all for putting in Exhibit A the change from last chart. I know that that was originally omitted or omitted in a previous piece of legislation. That is incredibly helpful for, I think, me and maybe some of my colleagues, that we don't have to go back and look at historical information and previous legislation. So, if we can just continue to keep that information in the exhibit, that would be greatly appreciated.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, agree with Ms. Fiedler, having that information about the change is very helpful. I was just curious, there's two schools within my district that changed from closed to open. It was Crofton Elementary and Crofton Meadows Elementary. And I was just curious if we know what the drivers were behind the lower numbers. Just a generalization, I don't expect you to have specifics necessarily, just curious what thoughts are there.
Each year, we kind of look at individual schools and see how much projected growth is actually occurring versus what we predicted the prior year. Those are likely just adjustments down for the lower home sales in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you. As most people know, the school chart is near and dear to my heart, but I think this evening, all I can say is a huge, huge congratulations to opening three amazing, beautiful schools last week. I know my district is extremely proud of all of our school construction, and my son is in the first freshman class at Severn Run, and I get to watch him play this week in his first soccer game. It's very exciting, and I can't wait to my neighbors complain about hearing the stadium noise from Severn Run High School. I know we'll all keep working on some of the new traffic patterns that are combating, we're combating over at Old Mill Middle South, but it's an amazing accomplishment for the school system and for the county with all the infrastructure that we're enhancing. It's exciting. I look forward to my community not being a part of redistricting in Phase Two. I will leave that to other people on the council. It is hard. It is hard on communities, but it is necessary. And I know the school board is prepared to do the hard work for Phase Two. So, thank you all very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about Bill 6524? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 65-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have no one signed up in advance to speak on Bill 6524. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 6524 at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 6524 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
I'm going to read the title one more time, and then I will read Amendment Number One.
For that?
Thank you. Bill number 6524, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, School Utilization Chart. Amendment Number One, this technical amendment clarifies that the changes in the revised school utilization chart are based on the updated enrollment projections in the 2024 Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's exactly what it does. It alters the line that says other information and clarifies that it's based on the Education Facilities Master Plan.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number One? Is there a second? Madam Secretary, please, is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number One has been adopted.
And this is a technical amendment. We can move forward and vote on Bill number 6524. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 6524.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 6524 has passed.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Have a good night. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 66-24.
Bill number 6624, In Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Amended and Restated Lease Between Anna Rundle County, Maryland and Wiley Bates School, LLC.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Daniels from our Office of Real Estate, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So, the Wiley Bates School, LLC, which was formerly known as the Wiley Bates Senior Housing Partnership, entered into a lease with the county in 2005, and it was amended in 2015 and amended again in 2023. The Second Amendment to the lease extended the term for an additional 42 years, so it expires in 2097. This new amended and restated lease between the parties is for a term of 99 years, and it shall start upon full execution when the lease is approved. The tenant is desirous to renovate the senior housing section of the property, which contains 71 one-bedroom housing units. They have financing pending with Housing and Urban Development, Department of Housing and Urban Development-approved lender, and the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development to help facilitate the project. The HUD lender requires that specific language be included in the lease document. As such, both parties desire us of entering into a new amended and restated lease that will include that language. Construction and renovation costs will exceed $10 million. Renovations at the property will include, but not be limited to, replacing and upgrading kitchens and bathrooms, replacing and upgrading lighting throughout, replacing flooring throughout the units in living spaces and bathrooms, replacing and upgrading water heaters and HVAC systems, painting that units, and interior storm window replacements. There's also some upgrades to the common areas, including the trash compactors and chutes, replacing common area carpet and flooring, painting the common areas, upgrading the elevators, storefront doors, HVAC and water heater, and a roof replacement. At the appropriate time, we will ask for this bill to be held until the next meeting. There's some additional information at the Office of Law uncovered regarding the tenant, so there will be, need to be an amendment to the lease. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We still have to have a public hearing, so why don't we go ahead and get that out of the way, and then we'll, someone will make a motion to hold on your behalf?
Appreciate that.
We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 6624. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece of testimony, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We have no one signed up ahead of time to speak on Bill 6624. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 66-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 66-24.
Bill number 6624, In Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Amended and Restated Lease Between Anna Rundle County, Maryland and Wiley Bates School, LLC.
Madam Chair. Ms. Fiedler.
I have a question before the motion.
Sure.
Have there been any improvements to the property or the facility since 2005, when the initial lease was signed?
Since 2005, I'm not aware of any, any major improvements to the property.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair.
Ms. Rodbien.
Wasn't there a new, like a new HVAC system installed on the property? Does that sound familiar?
It does not. I could check with facilities. I can tell you that in the past three years, they have had problems with the HVAC.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hunt, is a motion to hold until the next September 16th, is that adequate?
Yes, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion to hold the vote on Bill 66-24 until September 16th, 2024?
Motion to hold until September 16th, 2024.
Is there a second? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill number 66-24 until September 16th, 2024.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Bill 6624 until September 16th has passed.
At this time, we will discuss the county executive's vetoes to Bill number 2824, Comprehensive Rezoning Region Four, which this council passed on July 15th. Via the county charter, the county council may discuss or override any comprehensive zoning vetoes at its next legislative session following the vetoes, which is why we are discussing them this evening. On July 24th, the county executive sent the county council a letter issuing partial vetoes to amendments numbers 14 and 42. The county executive's partial veto to amendment number 14 changes zoning for 1401, 1403, 1450, 1460, 1462, and 1475, Shot Town Road from R1 to RLD. Does any council member wish to make a statement about this veto? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was, if folks in the room who attended that meeting, and obviously my colleagues, this was a very emotional discussion. I think a key point that I heard from both opposition and support of the change to R1 was that everyone off of Shot Town Road loves the rural nature and feel of the community. So, knowing that that is shared in common with everyone who lives off of Shot Town Road, from everyone who came out here to discuss the proposed amendment, I feel confident and comfortable that this area will remain rural with some legacy housing added. I could sit up here and try to fight and get my colleagues to hold the amendment, but I don't think that it's fair to put the community through that at all, and I don't want to do that to the community, either the opposition or the support. You all provided very emotional testimony, and as a result, there will be no action taken on this veto this evening.
Thank you. The county executive's partial veto to amendment number 42, changing the zoning from R1 residential to W2 light industrial. The veto will cause the zoning of the northern portion of 201 Ember Drive to revert to R1, the same zoning proposed in Bill number 28-24 is introduced. Does any council member wish to make a statement about this partial veto? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I put out the reasons on the record at the meeting on, I believe it was July the 15th, why I thought this was an appropriate compromise for this piece of property, and why I felt this was the right zoning for this property. As we can see, the county executive felt differently, but I stand by those reasons, and at this point, I would make a motion to override the veto of the county executive on amendment 42.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll to override the partial veto to amendment number 42 to Bill number 28-24.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
I apologize. I need a little clarity on what exactly we're voting on.
Mr. Volkey.
Sure.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll to override the partial veto to amendment number 42 to Bill number 28-24.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
I apologize. I need a little clarity on what exactly we're voting on.
Sure. So, if you take a look, Ms. Rodbien, at the page three, if you are in the document, it's called Veto Letter 2024 July Attachments PDF. If you go to page three of that, you will see there's a map, and there are two hashed sections. The bottom hashed section changed that from R1 to open space. The county executive did not veto that portion. The top part of that property, the county executive did veto the change from R1 to W2 on that portion of the property. The veto override would make this higher portion of the property, W2, as was originally set out in amendment 42, that was passed by the council on July the 1st. Actually, I think the statement I made was on July 1st when we passed that amendment, so.
Thank you. I will vote nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
As we have more than five votes, it is six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The amendment to, amendment number 42 veto override has passed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I just address the audience with regard to the veto?
Sure.
I know there was some public testimony this evening asking for a veto of two other areas of Region Four. Unfortunately, the county council does not have the authority to initiate a veto. That comes solely from the county executive's office, and we don't have any other vetoes.
So, I have instructions about if a motion passes. So, Bill number 28-24 as amended, and the vetoed partial amendment number 14 will go into effect on September 7th, 2024. Wait.
Yes.
Okay.
And amendment 42.
And amendment number 42 will go into effect on October 18th, 2024. Okay. All right. This council has officially experienced a veto and a veto override. We've not done that before. Okay. That's exciting. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m., when we will convene for a county, a council work session here in the chambers. Have a good night, everyone. Be safe.